I don't know. Never get on the table.
Okay, everybody here?
Troy Ross and Council.
Okay, I'd like to reconvene the regular meeting. We previously had an in-camera to discuss labor relations and we're now reconvening our regular meeting. First up is public input. Is there anyone who would like to speak to council about anything who is not a delegation?
Hello there. My name's Larry Doyle and I'm just here to discuss, I think maybe a letter is part of your package tonight, from the Ross and Winter Carnival Committee. And just to put it on council's radar that once again, the end of January, we're planning on having the Winter Carnival, which is not possible without the support of the city. So, do you have a copy in your packet of this letter? Or is there any... I might say that it does say January 29th to February 1st in here, but if you see advertisement, it will say January 29th to January 32nd. Just following in the carney atmosphere. So, anyway, don't be misled. It's February 1st, not January 32nd. So, I think everything is pretty much as it has been in other years. Closure of Queen Street from First Avenue down through the alley behind the credit union, moving of snow. Generally, we work with Darren Alvo with Public Works to arrange all that, but we pretty well got it down to a formula the last few years. So, yeah.
Any other questions? A little bit of ignorance here, but I saw some correspondence from the previous council in regards to the cost expense to bring the snow in for the rail jam. And I just wondered, had there been some resolution between the city and the committee as far as some sharing, there's some assistance, some other volunteer assistance in the community that could offset some of those costs?
Yeah. I'm glad you brought it up. I wasn't going to, but I'm glad you did bring it up. No, in the sense, we have been very concerned about cost over the last couple of years with the rail jam. And in fact, after the Winter Carnival last year, we decided, you know, we weren't going to have it anymore. But there are a couple merchants, basically Brian and Vicki from Powder Hound, and a couple boys from Ross Vegas that are eager to put it on. Deanne Stevens from Tourism Rossin is eager to keep it in town. And it really does capture people's attention when they come into town to see, wow, you know, this hill with snow on it. So, the big problem in the last couple of years has been moving of snow and the city feels that they just kind of, they need a, like a piston bully, to move the snow. So, I think we've got pretty well, we hit, Paul Agall and Kieran Gall have both said twice that they are going to supply one if we can get it into town. And the boys from Ross Vegas seem to think that either Sims or another contractor will supply a flatbed to bring it in for one day to push the snow around. So, hopefully, we'll have lots of snow and use a minimum amount of snow. They want to lay out the course differently, so not so dependent on rails, but more on picnic tables and other zany sort of objects. So, less snow will be needed. Hopefully, we'll have lots of snow by then. And certainly with Kieran's equipment, that would be the piece of equipment for the job to keep the expense down.
So, has the city agreed that they're going to still provide the... I understand the big expense is actually moving the snow, bringing it in?
Yeah, but they can stockpile it and quite often, I mean, it is weather-dependent, for sure. I mean, if it, that will be something that has to be monitored. If we don't get any snow, well, then obviously, we won't be having a rail jam. You know? But hopefully, see, normally, the snow slides off the arena roof. They don't move it, so that is a source of snow. And then they stockpile the snow ahead of time, like behind the grind. Trying to think of what the name was, but the grind in that alley there and right now.
I had the same concerns as Andy. And when it comes time to endorsing this or support, I would tie it to the budget figure.
You would which, Joey?
I'd tie it to the budget figure. I see our...
Lloyd, we can have this discussion.
Yeah. But I'm just saying that, I'm letting him know that would be a problem.
So, I'm not quite sure what you're suggesting?
We budgeted $17,297.
You have budgeted that?
It's in the budget for that amount.
Oh, well, it's never been over that that I... I don't quite understand that because I understand from Darren over the last few years, I haven't talked to Darren recently, but the, it was budgeted somewhere less than that. And we were running, we never have run over $10,000.
No, it has been over 17.
Is it?
It had been over 17, it's usually budgeted around that.
Last two years?
Yeah.
Has it been over 17?
Yeah. But you know, I don't want to get into a huge discussion on this now, but we can talk about more on the agenda and you can, and if you want to stay, you could actually make some...
I'd like to get back to this networking function at the miners' hall. But, I mean, yeah, give me a blueprint of how to proceed. I mean, Darren wasn't, doesn't want to stick his neck out. Obviously, we can't cover any unfounded expenses because our hands are limited, but we had hoped to bring these contractors in to cut the expense down. Now, if Darren could be given or give us a dollar amount and what to expect, then we could look around and get other community supporters to help us out with it.
Yeah, well, I think that's going to be the key thing. It was $17,320 last year, and that was way over the budget, right? But...
The budget was, sorry?
Well, I don't have the budget right now.
The year previous was 2012, was under, more than $10,000.
Yeah, so, anyway, okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anybody else for public input?
Yeah, I think so. Public input?
Okay. Okay, so, next up, we're going to adopt the agenda. Do I have a mover?
Seven.
Okay.
One second.
Aaron and Lloyd, and any discussion on the agenda? All in favor? Opposed? Okay. All right, now, we have some minutes to adopt, but the minutes from the inaugural meeting a council held on December 1st, 2014 be adopted. Do I have a mover to that? John Secunder, Andy, any discussion on those minutes?
Really, one comment I had is I thought I recalled that I had made the motion about the mountain market plan. I said...
It was a little confusing because we were all throwing in a little bit of input in the process.
Which was the motion?
Yeah, let's see.
It felt my name wrong three times.
I know.
It just stands, we can change it.
It's nothing new.
Okay.
There's an amendment on the motion I made and seconded by Counselor Cosby on the miner's hall rental, or the miner's hall market. And we said we'd cover the cost of the, we'd cover the hard costs. We didn't identify the hard costs. Remember, we changed that motion?
And what, did you change it to?
We resolved the council rents the miner's hall to the Ross and Mountain Market three times for the amount that covers the admin, and then instead of the administrative and cleaning costs, that covers the hard costs that the city incurred.
Okay, and are you anticipating that there's other hard costs besides administration and cleaning?
Well, I thought we were getting into a little bit of an argument on the level of the cleaning that the user group would do, and we just said hard costs, and then we'd determine that after.
Oh, right, that's right. There was that distinction. So, that is a distinction because if the user group does the cleaning themselves, they wouldn't be paying this.
They wouldn't be paying the custodial charge.
So, yeah, it should say hard costs, so it's the actual cost to the city. Okay? We'll make that change. Anything else? Okay, all in favor of those minutes?
As amended.
As amended. Anyone opposed? Nope. Carrie, good. Okay, now, we have some delegations. Our first delegation is from the Ross and Public Library, so they're going to present to us. Please move forward, state your name, and are you going to, are we going to use this? Okay, a moment.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. For those of you that don't know me, my name's Adam House. I'm here in my role as the Vice Chair of the Ross and Public Library. We want to thank you for this opportunity to present to you this evening. Our Chair, Chris Doderico, was supposed to be here, but he had an emergency come up and therefore, you're stuck with me. The Ross and Library wanted to present to you early on in council to welcome the new members of council and also to provide a high-level overview of our library renewal project. This is a project that we're engaged in to revamp the library and bring new energy to the library and the community at large. Now, just before I get into it, there was a recent study put out by the Toronto Public Library that brought forward an interesting stat. It was, for every dollar of investment in public libraries, it results in over $5 being generated in the local economy. So, I think that's an interesting stat to keep in the back of our minds as we continue to look at the library and our future going forward. So, the vision for the renewal project is to revitalize the Ross and Public Library as a dynamic learning environment using modern design and leading-edge technology. Revisioning the library will ensure a comfortable, flexible, and information-rich interior design to address growing demands and changing community needs. As we all know, the Ross and Library has been around for a long time, over 75 years. Originally, in 1939, it opened. 1949, it moved to the basement of the courthouse, and since then, it has moved to our current location on Columbia Avenue. This is a heritage building. And one of the things that we're really proud of is that of 71 libraries in B.C., we're ranked 11th in active cardholders. So, that shows some strong support in the community for the Ross and Library. These statistics, we've been keeping them for some time now. In 2013 is the last year that we have the full year statistics for. Some very positive trends in that, including a 46% increase in visits, 21% increase in physical items, borrowed books, DVDs, et cetera, 15,000% increase in e-items, electronic books, electronic movies, music, et cetera. Program attendance is another big one. We've increased that by over 115% in the last two years, up to 2,800 people. And that runs the full range of Rossanders. That's from, right from tots, from toddlers in our Quick Start programs, all the way up to seniors. So, the entire community is, benefits from these programs. Further usage, almost 2,000 uses of our public computers, plus we also have Wi-Fi available for the public. The meeting room has been used a minimum of 40 times a month. Some of the organizations that use this, Friends of the Rossland Range, the Rossland Skating Park, I know the skate park organization used to use it, CVAL ESL, that's the Columbia Basin for Adult Literacy, their English as a Second Language program, that uses it, and RCE, the Rossland Society for Environmental Action. All these organizations are able to use this facility free of charge, no charge to them. Of course, libraries are changing, and we're evolving to try and meet those needs. Technology is a big driver of change. In the last decade, technology has increased at a rapid pace. Some of the things that we hope to be able to provide to our community through this includes the massively open online courses. So, this is digital education. This is your online distance learning. This opens up further education for those people who can't afford to or choose not to travel for a continued education. Digital literacy, so social media is becoming bigger and bigger, and we want to make sure that our children are engaged in it, and as well as our children, we want to make sure that our adult population can take advantage of this as well. So, one of our goals is to be able to provide learning environments and courses for adults and seniors to be able to keep pace with technology. Why are we seeking to do this change? While we've spoken to our patrons, and these are some of the things that they're looking for, people want new signage. Our kids' area is small, it's outdated, and it needs to be improved for our children. People are looking for comfortable furniture to sit and read. You go into a chapter store now and they've got couches, they've got lazy boys, they've got fireplaces. People want to see that sort of thing in the library. We need more electrical outlets, again, going back to technology. Many people bring in their own computer. Without the ability to plug that in, really limits their use of the facilities. Some of the descriptions that we've received in our feedback, dated, cramped, crowded, clean but boring. We want to improve that. We want to make this as welcoming a place as possible. And that meeting room that all of our, all of our community organizations are in, all of them are requesting windows, or would have said that would be a nice feature. Our fundraising goal, the fun part, off the top, we are not looking for any funding from the city. We're looking to fund this program completely in-house through corporate donations, through grants, through individual donations. We're not asking for money from the city, we're just asking for support, and we've got a good start on our fundraising already. We feel that the construction budget will be about $280,000. That's an early estimate. We haven't gotten the final plans in, and once that comes in, we'll have a better handle on that. Our schedule, we've already, we've already assigned an architectural design and design group, and they have got us a few drawings back. Haven't chosen the final one yet. We'll need some feedback on that, but we're well on our way. Fundraising will be ongoing. We started fundraising back in July, and we anticipate a minimum of a full year to achieve the funds that we need. We're hoping that next September or October, we can start construction. The design consultants that we've engaged with are ratio architects. We've got a graphic design consultant that's helping us with signage and fundraising in that aspect. This is one of those possible layouts for the redesign. As I said, this isn't finalized, this is just a preliminary concept, and we invite any of you to come into the library, and these are, if I'm not mistaken, these are on display in the library. Have a chat with our Director, Bev. She's usually there. Contact any of her.
24/7.
Listen to Bev, she's a very dedicated, very dedicated person. Loves the Ross and Library. Any of our board members would also be more than willing to sit down with you and chat and go over this as well. That's just some of the conceptual designs they're looking at. Again, we're looking to open up this space. We're looking to make it brighter and more inviting. This is some of the fundraising that we've already accomplished, so we're on our way. We've got over $32,000 in funding already accounted for, so that only leaves another $250 to go. So, thank you very much for your time. We appreciate it. Are there any questions? I might be able to answer them.
I have a couple. First, a comment, very exciting concept, but I don't know if I can speak for the rest of council, but I'm really excited about proposing for this. I think it fits in well. It's going to be a great asset for the town. Congratulations on having the vision and the option to get going on it. Couple of questions. Could you send us the link to the Toronto Library study that claims five bucks in the community for a dollar investment? Interested to take a look at that. Just, I've got to ask, 40 times per month, the meeting rooms use that, so every day plus 10 days, it's used twice, kind of it? How does that work?
So, if you're a nonprofit, you can call us up and you can say, and yeah, you've done it, so, and we're used during the day, we're used in the evening, Saturdays. So, Saturday, we actually had somebody coming right in an exam in a room that was decorated to receive Santa a couple of hours later, so, I'm not sure how she did, but, so, yeah, but it's just used continually.
Yeah, that's a great little usage, and your statistics on borrowing and in-borrowing also contribute pretty high usage. Did you do a formal survey? Is that how you got the feedback that you pulled there?
We did a number of surveys. Survey Monkey, I believe, was the forum that we used. We also spoke with our patrons at the library. The survey, we communicated via bubble, via Facebook, and via our patrons that come in. We had it, we had a sign at the front desk, and our staff all spoke to the patrons to try and get as much feedback as possible. And I think we actually, I can't remember the number of participants, but it was a decent amount.
Sorry, just one more quick question. I'm sorry. You're talking about offering massively online open courses, or open online courses. Does the current internet service actually support that?
Well, I'm glad you asked that. We have been in discussions with the broadband committee previously. I've spoken with Brian Fry. I was in communications with Jody Blomby from the last council. And the idea was that the city and the library would work together in that the city would connect the Ross and Library to broadband, and that would open up that access to the entire community. One of the items that we had discussed, Jody and myself, was that by having this access to the library, the city can then use it as a showcase, so we can bring community groups and members in, display them some of the possibilities of broadband, and thereby generating the interest and the furtherance of that broadband project. We can also use it for these massively online courses. We can use it for the TED Talks, they have the online, you can download the TED Talks. So, for instance, any of the environmental groups in town can stream these. Recently, no, I guess it was a few years ago now, there was 24 Hours of Green, I think it was David Suzuki Foundation, or Al Gore Foundation put it on. We can do that in the library if we have broadband. We have the technology as far as the audio/video setup goes, but what we're lacking is the speed of the internet. So, when broadband comes to town, it opens up an entirely new world for us, and the library is an excellent place to provide that to the community.
Any other questions?
I was just looking at the numbers and the usage and the growth, and they're all amazing and tremendous. I was thinking like the, in particular, the 46% growth in traffic. I was wondering if there's anything in particular you guys could look to and identify that you've done that caused this amazing growth?
Over the past few, I've been on the board now for, I believe, four years?
You gotta check, don't I?
Four, maybe five, I'm not sure now. Over the past few years, we've just started pushing new programming, started, you know, really trying to generate excitement from within. Almost a, not quite a rejuvenation, but along those sorts of lines, where we're trying to reboot how the community sees the library. Bev has done an excellent job in engaging the community. We've been getting out there a lot more. We've been at the farmers' markets, we've been at Golden City Days, Winter Carnival, we participate in that. Any community event that we can participate in, we generally try and get something in there. And I think as well, we're seeing more young families in town, and the library, because of our increased youth programming, it's a real draw for that. And we're seeing a lot of, a lot of young families, young children, come into the library.
That's very impressive. Well done.
Thank you.
I just was going to ask if it had any correlation with the birth rate in the community for the last five years.
Certainly, as far as the usage for kids, it certainly seems like that's definitely got to be increasing substantially. Our children's programming is astounding, the participation in it and the increases. I don't recall exactly the children reading program increases.
On Friday mornings, we do a baby storytime, which is up for children, for children up to 30 months, and we get between 20 and 25 babies, plus their parents in our meeting room, singing, you know, it's great. But, yeah.
You know, when you talk about dated, cramped, and boring, it reminds me of council changes. But, thank you, this was really, really great. And one thing, council's going to be doing facilities tours, and I would love for us to come in and really have a look at your space with somebody there to explain what the changes are going to be and take a look at the real drawings and stuff. So, we'll be in touch with you about that.
We have masking tape on our floor.
Even that.
We love masking tape.
Eight of the 3D flashers.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Another plug for Broadway. Okay, we have our next delegation is... Yeah. Yeah. RPA is up to talk about miner's hall program.
Thank you, got quite a conversation to get to there. I don't see anything funny.
I know, hard to math.
He was completely intimidated by the quality of their graphics.
Yours are pretty good, too.
Yeah. Can we put this to you, how do you do that? I need some of the library technology upgrade classes. Okay, and there were questions, did you? Okay, good. Hi, thank you for having us. This is Renati Suni, she's the Chair of the Ross and Council for Arts and Culture. My name's Ann Danud, and this is Dea Corneal. And Laura's in the back there, the four of us, along with Larry Doyle, who's over the Exodus, are the Ross and Council for Arts and Culture's current Miners' Hall renovation committee. It's the longest committee name we've ever had. We're here to bring as a, basically, an update to where our miners' hall renovation project is at, realizing that most of you are new to council. We're going to try and give you a brief update on what we've been working on. We've been working on this for the past two years. One of the really lovely things about our hall is that it hasn't changed a lot in the last, close to 100 years, over 100 years, 125 years, but there have been some key upgrades, big upgrades done in '79, and we believe now that it's time to do the next phase. Is this here? Great. Renati's going to talk a little bit about what our renovation plans entail, and then I'm going to talk a little bit of our plan moving forward from here.
Okay, so, there's four parts to this planned miners' union hall renovation. The first one, the building envelope, which would include the maintenance to the siding, there needs, the maintenance needs to be done, like paint and repairs, and the roof replacement. The second part, the restoration of the facade. The facade, that would include, like, preserving hopefully, the heritage windows that are on the bottom floor, and restoring the balcony, and some of the roof details that you saw on the previous slide, those have, yeah, that little parapet there that were cresting, those have gotten lost in the last renovation, and so, we're exploring to restore the facade to its original state. And the third part, the entry plaza, as we were looking at the facade, it kind of became clear that the outside of the building, like the plaza, could use some work. The railings are very industrial and don't really provide a lot of safety, so increasing the safety of that space, making it possibly a little bigger because there's lots of spill out from the building as there is big events held there. And the plaza, yeah, making it more attractive, giving people a sense of arrival as they look at the building or as they get to the building. And also, at the same time, there's some drainage issues that should be addressed. The fourth part, the reclamation of the attic level, and that would include the green room, a green room for performers, which would be on the south side of the building, then a multi-use space and a lounge area on the north side of the building. So, those are the four parts to this overall plan. And we've been working on this, like Ann said, over the last couple of years. In 2012, we pursued the possibility of adding a green room for performers. In the attic, we hired Thomas Lowe, an architect from Nelson, who has quite a lot of experience working with heritage renovations and restorations in the area, to help us put together feasibility studies for that green room. And we consulted with the structural engineer, the fire marshal, and had a co-consultant come out. The results of all these studies in the end were that the feeling was that it would be advisable to actually go and do a renovation of the whole attic for safety, rather than just a part of it. And that was like fire issues mostly, egress. And so, Thomas then did a conceptual drawing for us, and we had a cost estimate... And we consulted with the structural engineer, the fire marshal, and had a code consultant come out. The results of all these studies in the end were that, the feeling was that it would be advisable to actually go and do a renovation of the whole attic for safety, rather than just a part of it. And that was like fire issues mostly, egress. And so, Thomas then did a conceptual drawing for us, and we had a cost estimate done at the time. And then, as we were looking at this plan and discussing it with the city, it became clear that it would be most, actually, could gain a lot of efficiencies if we put their plan, which was mostly maintenance upgrades to the siding and the roof, and our plan together in terms of labor and material costs, and also, it would allow RCAC to leverage the funds that the city has already put aside for the renovation, which at the time is $280,000. So, now, we then went back to Thomas Lowe and asked Thomas to put the two projects into one project. The city had put some money on the table at that, towards that end, and, $5,000, and we were able to get funding from the CBT, $7,000, to put the plan into, into one big conceptual plan that includes the four parts that we've explained. So, one overall renovation plan and a cost estimate has been done up to date. And the costs were, in the next slide, it shows how they were here, how those, they came out at. It was for the building envelope, $320,900, just the facade and the roof. The facade restoration, $69,500. For the entry plaza, $68,400. And the reclamation of the attic level, $451,500. And that includes some other parts that would actually spill out more into the other parts of the hall, because fire issues, like fire doors and sprinklers, need to be addressed in the rest of the building as well. The total renovation cost ended up at $917,300. We added a line item here, project management and development, not knowing if the capacity was within the city to do that part, or if an outside person would need to come in to deal with the, the project management. And then, we're at a total project cost at $970,300, including that project management item. So, that's so far, it's a lot.
The package that was in your, or the details that were in your council package, this is the final project. It's not perfect, it still needs some tweaking. There's some, there's some really funny, different spellings of Miners Hall on this front page, so we do have some perfecting to do. The plans inside are conceptual at this point, which means we are still talking to community groups and saying, you know, of these plans, what do you like, what don't you like? So, there will be an opportunity to find communities and make them more reflective of what we actually need. One of the lovely things about this is that the whole, the miners, when they first built this building, we, we've actually found the records that show that they intended to develop the fourth floor. It was always intended to be a space. And if we didn't, hadn't been able to find those records, it's possible that we would have been constrained by the new build, building codes. And it's the fact that this was, there was historical precedent that this was developed that is allowing us to move forward in making this a space that the community can have access to. This project was deliberately split into four pieces. I'm gonna talk about where the money's gonna come from next, 'cause that's what everyone goes, where are you gonna get $977,300? We built this project and split it into four because we realized that there are some pieces of this that we may never find funding for. And so, what we're trying to do is try and find the funding to fund various pieces. The ones that were successful, well, successful in finding the money are the ones we'd like to move forward with. For example, the facade restoration, it's really pretty, but it really is icing on the cake. If we can find that $70,000, if we can find our dream project amount of $977,000, or $377,000, anyways, almost a million dollars, then we will move ahead with the full meal deal. But if we not, if not, we can already see where we can scale back or leave some piece till later when we find additional funds. So, what I'd like to show you next is what we anticipate, how we're going to fund this. Now, Renati mentioned that a key part of this for us is the money that's in reserve, being held in reserve by the city. As of 2014, it was 200, about $285,000. The city has been contributing about $55,000 a year for the last three or four years, five years maybe, to get to that amount. We would, we have, 'cause we won't start building at least for another year, we're going to anticipate that as you go through your budgeting process, you'll see the wisdom of continuing to add that money into the Miners Hall Reserve. It's actually needed. If we looked at just the part of this budget, the building envelope, which we, we think of as truly the city's responsibility, it's routine maintenance, it'll be really hard to find funders who will, will fund routine maintenance on a building, maintenance and repairs. The estimate on that part is $330,000 alone. If we don't find money that heritage-specific for facade restoration, then right now, that amount for restoring the front of the building is actually rolled into that facade restoration amount. So, if we don't do any facade restoration through heritage upgrade and just do routine building maintenance to the front of that building, then the budget could be higher than $327,000, just to do what we think of as the city's portion of this. So, I encourage you, as you head into budget time, to consider continuing adding to the Miners Hall Reserve so that there is enough money on the table. What we would like, what we proposed the last council, they were in agreement and principle with, is that we could, by rolling the project together, we could then go to funders who require that we, to show that we have matching funding. And so, we're hoping, we actually already have finished one, what, done, submitted one application that showed city money on the table, and this is the Heritage Legacy Fund, which I'll get to in a minute. So, we're hoping that by 2015, the city has $335,000 in the budget. We've talked Columbia Basin Trust, this might be a little bit ambitious for what they're considering. They generally fund about 25% of any capital project, so we may be over the 25% sort of tolerance level. We've got confirmed funding from Heritage Legacy Funds. We asked for $25,000. They came back incredibly oversubscribed, but we came back and they offered $13,000. That is designated towards specific heritage-type preservation or restoration-type work. But it could be painting, preservation could be considered painting. RCAC is committed to coming up with $10,000 on their own. We'd like to go after Canada Cultural Spaces, NBC Creative Spaces funding. Of course, you see that the other funding group is about $129,000. In your packages, you'll see that there's some very specific groups that we would like to approach, but because we haven't formally approached them yet, it seems a little bit, maybe, out of line to put their name up on, on the board at this point, but you have it in your package, some of the organizations we'd like to approach for additional funding. If that all comes together and we get our dream funding package together, we'll have almost a million dollars to tackle this funding, or tackle this project. Our next step, of course, is to secure the funding, or most of the funding that we think we'll need. And depending on our fun, and depending on how much funding we manage to secure, and the input from our continuing community consultations, we feel that we'll be in a position to start building. One of the things that we really need to tackle is setting timelines. When is it best to do this renovation? Our original timeline, we were hoping, was spring, summer, fall, 2015, given how much ti, how much funding we still have to secure, and the fact that, sorry, brain, brain cut out there for a second. Given that we still have funding to secure and the tendering process that we'll go, have to go through as part of the city's part, under city's guidelines, we think that 2015 might be really ambitious, in fact, nearly impossible. And we'd like to talk to council about what a realistic timeline might be. We have had some chance, opportunity to speak to some of the city staff, and definitely feedback so far from city staff, from their perspective, is that 2016 might be the wise move, but it would be the latest that the city could hold off on doing the required exterior renovations to the Miners Hall without seriously compromising the Miners Hall. Of course, once our timelines are set, we'll get working on working drawings and take into consideration input from the community, and then we'll be into the tender process. And hopefully shortly after that, awarding and tender and rollout of the project. What we, our point at this, besides getting your feedback tonight, is we will require ongoing letters of support from the city when it comes to approaching our, our funders, especially the next two big ones that we'd like to approach. And we hope that we still have access to Miners Hall Reserve Fund, and that you'll consider continuing to contributing to the Miners Hall Reserve Funds for at least the next year, and then, of course, some guidance, setting a timeline for 2015 or 2016. But that's where we're at.
You want to have any questions?
I have one. When do you need to know about the 2016? Is that, I mean, I kinda think that's a bit of a no-brainer.
Um, it, I don't think, I think it's more of a guidance thing. We're, we're really feeling like 2016 is probably the most realistic, 'cause this is a full project, and definitely from talking to Tracy and Darren, today Darren is looking at it and thinking, you know, by the time we get to tendering everything, 2016 makes the most sense. There is some debate, I think you would call it, whether spring, summer, or fall of 2016 makes the most sense, considering all the users in the building, and how that might impact, for example, follies or recreation program or other users that are dependent on the Miners Hall. And so, there is also a planning piece there that would make 2016 make a lot more sense, of how do we make sure that the Miners Hall remains somewhat functional, or how do we relocate existing programs?
I think we really wanna see a collaboration of all user groups. I know it's an issue with the follies, and I think it's really important. Like, I would love to have some representative follies here with you, saying, "Yeah, yeah, let's do this," and, and have a, a schedule worked out that works for them as well as the user groups, too.
We've entertained a couple. There, there's nothing final yet, because we're feeling so much like we still need to know how long is this renovation gonna take? What phases will it roll out in? How will that impact interior spaces? So, we still have a lot to consider on that front. And then, of course, alternatives, like if there's no alternative place, for example, for the follies to present, then that's really gonna shape what that looks like. And it, as you know, we've had some conversations, and they're still very much at the sort of up in the air, because we feel like we didn't have enough information to say, "Listen, you know, if we're ripping, if we're working upstairs and we're addressing HVAC, then that's gonna impact the main hall, so no, you can't be performing at that same time." So, how do we make sure that we can accommodate?
Well, that's a huge issue. Huge issue, huge issue.
And for recreation as well.
Um, I don't know that we would stand in the way of saying, "Go for 2016." I don't know if there's, if you need a resolution or a motion or something from us, I don't, I don't see that's necessary, because I don't think 2015 makes any sense at all, right? So, that's logic, you just, you come to us with your plans.
I was curious, and what you guys have done, looking at it, is if these renos, let's say you're able to do the whole thing in the green room and the attic, is this will just allow you to get different types of events, or maybe increase rental rates for it?
That's what we're hoping. Like, with the multi-use space in the attic, that would allow use for a whole variety of user groups in that space. It could be workshops, it could be meetings, conferences, so that opens up a whole lot of different user groups that could...
So, we can make a bit of a business case for that.
That's right, yeah. It's like using, yeah, no, it's not heavy use, like you wouldn't do a dance class up there, but you could do yoga or meditation, so it's, yeah, certainly give a lot more, I think, sustainability to the hall.
Very good. Just a couple of things. Access is still gonna be an issue, it's obviously just stairs.
Yeah, there's nothing we can do about that.
That's gonna be the reality. Yep. And the other, I guess, the idea of the work on the exterior of the building, you've had the architect take a look at it, or someone who has been able to take a look and say, "The roof isn't gonna, you got two more years left in the roof," and...
The city's...
But the city's done an audit, basically, on it as well?
Yeah.
Yeah, so even the paint, I mean, longer it's left.
Yeah, that needs to be addressed. Like, 2016 is probably the latest to, that you wanna deal with that.
So, potentially, could, I guess, if the funding is there, for example, with reserve funds, to do the envelope work, you know, the important, the roof, the paint, is, is that something that, it's gonna be expedited if, if that opportunity's there?
I think where, where we approached this was that, is that, you know, to do all that working, that's scaffolding, and that's really expensive.
Right.
And since, part of our thinking was that if we're gonna be working upstairs on the fourth floor, if the Min, if the Arts Council was gonna tackle that, that we might be able to get some cost savings by working together and purchasing, having one contractor, one impact, like have the whole reno happen at one time, and, and then some cost savings by only putting scaffolding, and that's up. So, that's why we would like it to come out together. And if we don't find the money, or for some reason, this just doesn't fly with the community, I mean, if there's some, some big show to offer at some point, then the city will still be in a position in 2016 to go ahead with the exterior upgrade that needs to be done. There's nothing that we're doing that's gonna stop. Right now, what we've got to offer is $13,000 more that could buy some nice heritage paint outside of it. But, you know, hopefully, we'll have more to offer. As I said, it, since we've got this sort of phase, then our, our goal is, let's see how much we can raise, and then see how much we can do together. And then, maybe the rest will have to wait until there's another opportunity.
That's good. I love the fact that there was a space for more public art out front in the plaza and on the drawings. And the other thing, as I said to the library group, you know, we are gonna be doing a facilities tour, and it'd be great if one of you could come with us and sort of give the facilities tour from the point of view of the renovations, as well as just physical.
We'd love to do that.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Yes, Amanda Gallery wants to speak. Come identify yourself.
While we're on that note, I have a lot of people coming to my old building and looking at those plaques, so I think maybe like, I'm not sure this is the right place for it, but some kind of community tour of our heritage buildings.
Good idea. Okay, thank you. All right, next up, we are moving into Business of the Day, which is the letter from the Winter Carnival folks.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
Does it look good up there, Mike?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, so, do we have a motion about accepting the requests from the Winter Carnival people? And we can talk about it?
Yeah.
Aaron?
A move that we adopt the motion, adopt the recommendations from staff.
Okay.
As word.
Okay.
My second?
Actually, yeah, okay, that's good.
I'll second that.
Okay, so, Aaron, you wanna start discussing?
The, as context, I think the Winter Carnival is a great event for the town in terms of economic development. It brings a lot of people to town. It, it's a proven winner in that respect, so I, I'd like us to continue to support it as much as we can. I do, I mean, the, the only issue I have is the one that Andy and Lloyd brought up, and that was that in 2013, they were told, "Get your act together on the costs of the rail job," and they didn't do it in 2014. Costs were actually higher, so that concerns me. But I'm reassured by what we've been told, that it's not gonna be like that this year. And that makes me very happy. So, I wonder what we could do to ensure that that's the case.
Your worship to the council, I suggest that the motion include the budget figure. Right now, in our financial plan, we have $9,500 allocated to the Winter Carnival.
So, is that, is that in here, Tracy? Was that in the package? Sorry, I didn't see that. I just saw that the twenty...
It's in our five-year financial plan.
Oh, it's 2013 and 2012.
Yeah, it's, it's been at the $9,500 level, but has been exceeded.
Okay, Lloyd?
I'd like to move an amendment then, that we support the motion, but tie it to the budget figure. That puts the onus on them to go out and try to secure the kind of participation that they mentioned there.
So, I had a very, very similar, actually, almost exactly motion that Lloyd was writing here, and saying that, you know, I love the Winter Carnival, but overall, the amount of money to be put in is actually a pretty small amount of money for a massive economic impact. But I did have some questions. I was wondering if Tourism Roslyn could get us, or already has some numbers on occupancy numbers and how it affects it, or if Tourism Roslyn down north of downtown had probably more anecdotal information on, I mean, I'm sure it does, but I'd love to try to see some data around. Does it increase business downtown? Does it increase occupancy? I'm sure it does, but I'd like to see numbers if possible.
I have some anecdotal information on that, because during the election, I talked to a lot of business owners, and every single person I spoke to, the majority retailers in town, said it had a huge impact on the business, Winter Carnival specifically. And in fact, I was kind, I was sort of in, in the camp of, "Hey, we're spending way too much on Winter Carnival" in, in previous years. But after listening to what the retailers have said, it has, it's the biggest economic impact in the community. So, I'm not quite comfortable saying we're gonna limit it to, to $9,500.
So, just in terms of process, are we, is that amendment on the table?
No, actually, it wasn't seconded.
It wasn't seconded. I was gonna say, you gotta second, then you discuss it.
Yeah, 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 sorry.
Okay, so, can I speak to that amendment then?
Yeah.
I'm not sure how practically we do that. So, do, do, you can't charge the Winter Carnival for, for budget overruns. I, I like the intent, I like the objective, but, you know, at, at the end of the day, you've gotta, if we say we're gonna support it, you gotta build that stuff. And if the costs do overrun, what do we do about it? Do we try to recoup those costs from... Do we try to recoup those costs from the Winter Carnival? I don't think that's feasible. I'm wondering, is there, is there any other way? I mean, could we write a letter similar to what was written in 2013, saying, "This is sort of your last chance to clean up your act and, you know, we'll deal with the consequences next year if things don't work out the way we've been told they'll work out. And we very much look forward to things working out that way."
Yeah, Andy?
Without having Darren here to talk about it, I would like that opportunity, to be honest, because I think, obviously, he's the direct connection to their demands and their needs for a lot of the work that we do. And it sounds like Darren's the one that's come back to us, or council previous and said, "Look, this far overran the budget and we've gotta do something different." So Tracy, maybe you've got some background.
Yeah, I think you can ask him those questions. And if I can't answer them, we can, we can ask Darren. But the main expenses is trucking of the snow. So if it's a good snow year, it's not that much of an issue. But if it's a poor snow year, that's the expense, is that trucking of the snow.
We've had two good...
And trucking of the snow done in regular hours is one thing, but if we're trucking in the snow in overtime hours, now you're a siege of snow.
I'm gonna hear from a member of our gallery here.
Okay, so...
Identify yourself, please, for the record.
I am Justin Kier. I am the City Manager at Ross Vegas Board Shop, and I've worked there for several years and been involved with it for several years. And without Peter there, the costs were driven up and up and up. And last year, I had nothing to do with it nor the year before. So we have several things in mind to cut the costs entirely. And trucking in the snow, especially last year, because the guy that wanted it wanted three feet of snow, and it was all trucked in and backbladed by the city, and that cost you half a fortune. We looked at the numbers, threw up our hands, saying, "Yeah, no wonder they wanna put us in the chopping block." So we've talked to a lot of people with volunteer hours, equipment and stuff, and I think we can get the costs down substantially low, lower than it's been for several years, and make it a better event than it's been. And I know Kier has promised a snow cap. So if we can get, like, two dump truck loads, dumped at the top, two at the bottom, then we can cat it all up and our costs right there alone is cut by, like, it'll cost a tenth of whatever it costs. We've got a bunch of bobcat operators queued up, and I think we've got more volunteer hours and people than we will ever add, so...
That's really, that's really great to hear. And I know we'd had that conversation in the shop and that, it was, it's very gratifying.
One other thing that has kind of bothered me over the years is that we cost, like, we charge people to enter our contest, and I never had anything to do with this. So instead of giving away a cash prize, which I don't think is necessary, given that we've got a lot of sponsor prizes to throw, and this is Brian, who's from the Saturn House, and he is a co-sponsor of the event, so that should help out a lot as well. But I was going to take all of the money that was entered in and put that back either to the city to cover their costs for operation of the vehicles or to the carnival. Like, I don't wanna keep it and I'm definitely not going to give it back to the competitors if, you know, the cost isn't a huge issue.
That's good.
My question is, how do the costs of the Rail Jam compare to the costs of the bobsled race?
Bobsled race, or...
Did you, did you look, there was a, 2014 was sent to us afternoon, did you see that?
No, I didn't.
So the 2013 bobsled race was forty-three-hundred and the Rail Jam was eighty-four.
Yeah, in 2014, bobsled was forty-seven and Rail Jam was ninety-eight.
So it's about, almost double.
Almost double.
Bobsled was holding roughly steady, it wasn't a big increase.
Yeah, none of the other things were big increases. It was just the Rail Jam. And I think we've had these two years of kind of...
With the downtown one, it was more than doubled. And the Rail Jam one was more than doubled. Those are the biggies.
Yeah, those are the big ones, yeah. So, anyway.
I'd like to provide direction through Tracy to Darren to see if we can certainly negotiate with the guys and meet the needs. I don't know if we need to put a budget figure to it tonight, but by the sounds of it, it's gonna be considerably less to run that particular event, which should reduce our overall costs. So maybe for next council meeting, we can, we can actually have some hard costs because if he's talking considerably reduced snow requirements, then it would be nice just to have that. So we know, you know, 'cause for us to say ninety-five-hundred dollars, and I agree, Mayor Moore, that we've got, it's an important event that needs to be well-supported by the community, so, and the city needs to do its part too. But I, you know, I think it's important to have some, go back to hard costs, just...
So do you have a specific question for Tracy to either answer now or get from Darren?
Yeah, I would like, I would like Darren to work with the organizers of this particular event and come up with some budget so that we have a better idea and are in a position to actually support monetary value.
Tracy?
I'd just like to caution council that our next meeting in January twelve...
Yeah, I think we're gonna have to make a decision about this now, but maybe what we can do, and I think we've got two of the key organizers here, are hearing our concerns and really it's more like, all right, sort of, make it happen the way we're talking about it happening, that the city can afford it and we'll go forward. And if it blows up again this year, then we're really gonna have to can it for next year. We never said we wouldn't do it next year. We just said we'd try to make some more stringent requirements about it. Aaron?
Just, the timing doesn't work, as Tracy said. And also, the idea of putting together an ex-ante budget is a little iffy, given that we don't know how much snow we're gonna get between now and January.
Yeah, we know, yeah.
Right? So, while I respect the idea, I recommend that we go forward, approve the request for support as asked, and so vote against the amendment to set our budget on it, and give them a letter on records, like we have the 2013 letter on record, saying, "We're looking forward to things being different this year and we'll talk if they aren't." That's my recommendation.
Andrew?
I was gonna say the same thing, that I'm, as much as I love the event, I'm uncomfortable with an open budgeted process, as we've seen last year, kind of blew up on us a little bit. So that was considered my same suggestion as Andy. I'd love to see the two of them work together and come up with a financial plan and all these awesome things you're saying with saving costs, which are really cool. Let's put them on paper and give them a bit of a range and work with Darren on the process.
I'm also going to suggest, because obviously it ran probably double what it should have, maybe put a cap on, like, "Hey, guys, you can have X amount of hours with city equipment and X amount of money for city employees."
That could be an arrangement that you and Darren could work out, right?
We're worried the cap being made, then you have to work to the cap.
Well, these guys.
But I know, I tried to...
They're taxpayers, they're taxpayers too. They're gonna do it as best they can.
The other gist of it is that I love the event, I love what you're doing, I'm worried about opening an event, so I say, "Let's approve it and give them a letter and say, you know, by next year, we're definitely gonna need a financial plan." And so just start working on that.
Okay. So actually, procedurally, we did not have the amendment seconded, so...
Yeah, so, Andrew seconded.
Oh, you did, you seconded?
I thought you did.
Isn't it the amendment?
I think I was gonna hand it early for a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, so seconded, so we've already had the discussion. So all in favor of, or do you wanna say something else about it?
Yeah, just in closing, I think what this fellow's suggesting is basically what we're talking, he's saying a certain number of hours, a certain amount of equipment. And I'm against, I'm not debating, I think it's a great event. But I don't like to give anybody an open check. You've had the experience where the cost printer doubled on you. So your Works Foreman, he looked at it and he said, "We've gotta cut these costs." He came down and put in a budget figure that he anticipates. And I think the people that organize the event have to live by those figures. So I'm speaking for the amendment.
Okay, it's just, I think the comment that Aaron made is that, you know, the practicality of, the practicality of it is...
No, we could vote here tonight.
We, I mean, we could, we could limit the hours, for sure. We could limit the hours, and if they can't get it done within the hours that we give them of machine time or whatever, the event either doesn't happen or they get creative, right? Just wanna do that. But without Darren here, I don't think we can really say what those hours are.
Without Darren here, it's more difficult to limit the hours because there's a different rate for a truck and a different rate for a front-end loader.
Yeah.
But I think, I've got faith in the budget figure he proposes, you know, the nine thousand dollar. So I'm speaking for the amendment, so let's call the question.
Yeah, the only thing I'd say about the budget is that I'm not sure how much actual planning goes into that particular number. It's sort of been that number for a number of years, it's just kind of a number. I'm not sure that Darren actually sat down and said, "This is the hours he anticipates," or, I mean, tricky name.
I think he's got a pretty good breakdown.
No, that's the actuals, right?
Yeah, he's got a pretty good breakdown of the costs in 2013 and he's had the historical experience. I think he should be pretty accurate on it.
Okay, well, I'm gonna call the question on...
The amendment first.
On the amendment. All in favor of the amendment? Okay, three, four, okay, all right, that passes. So now, do we have any more discussion on the motion with the amendment? And the motion is to accept the recommendations with tying it to the budget as given.
Which, which is the amount of nine thousand?
Ninety-five-hundred. Ninety-five-hundred, was it, Tracy? And that, okay, so ninety-five-hundred, which was the total cost of just the Rail Jam last year?
Nope. Oh, yes, you're right, you're right.
Yeah, it was ninety-eight-hundred, actually, so...
You're right.
Similar, okay. Aaron?
So just to be clear what we're about to vote on, the resolution as amended says the city will spend ninety-five-hundred or whatever that cost is, and after that, we shut down the machines. And if that's not enough, we don't have a Winter Carnival. Is that what we're about to vote on?
That's what we're about to vote on, because that, that's the full amount for Winter Carnival. That, we're not just talking about the amount of the Rail Jam, right? We're saying tying it to the budget.
You're fortunate, Tracy, you already voted on that.
I don't know, we...
No, we voted on the amendment.
We voted on the amendment.
We voted on the amendment first and then the motion.
Was that not the amendment? That's it?
Yeah, no, but the amendment is, it's separate from the motion. You have to approve the amendment and then you approve the motion.
Yeah, we're voting to, whether we're allowing the amendment, now we're voting...
Now we're voting on the amended motion.
The motion as amended, right? Sorry, we're a little confused here, but we'll get it right.
We'll get it right.
Yeah. We had it right. We knew what we were doing.
We're newbies.
Okay, so, anything further on that, Aaron?
No, that's just my question.
Andrew?
If we go ahead with this motion, I'm wondering, I'm hoping the guys go ahead and do a bit of a financial plan, and could they come back in theory in the first or second, first meeting in January and say, "Look, we're not even gonna be close to this, the carnival's in danger of not happening, we desperately need a last one, one thousand or whatever it may be." If that's on the table, then I'm in favor of the amended motion.
I mean, I see why they couldn't, but... Tracy, do you have any comment on that?
Anything possible.
Anything possible. This is the city, anything's possible. Lloyd?
I think Council Cosby's painting the worst-case scenario, that they're not gonna be able to do it and they're gonna cancel the event. But I'm putting faith in the people, Larry Doyle spoke up and these two fellows here, are here, and they're saying they're gonna come up with some, some way to get it done.
They're gonna cut it in half.
And they're gonna cut expenses. And I have faith in them, so I'm gonna vote for the motion.
They're gonna cut their total expenses in half. Now, here's the one thing that I, that I do wanna say, I, I am totally in favor of fiscal responsibility and being prudent, right? But I also think this event is growing year by year and the budget for it hasn't particularly grown year by year. I think if we go back, and I don't have the financial plan in front of me, so I can't speak to that exactly, but I, I feel it's a little harsh, right? Because, okay, maybe they won't cut the Rail Jam, but maybe they'll short on other things. The ice bar will get cut, you know, other things will get cut so they can make their target of the ninety-five-hundred dollars and will get a lesser product, which will impact our community. We may get less people coming or the people who come say, "Well, that was okay, but, you know, I'll go somewhere else next year." I, that's, that's just my concern. Probably they're not gonna cancel the whole thing, but it may become a lesser event, when I don't think it should be, given what I heard in the community about what a great economic driver this is, the biggest economic driver for the whole year for our town, which is a resort municipality, by the way. So, was there a hand up over here? No. John?
It is a Winter Carnival, which is dependent on weather. If it's warm and raining, what happens? I remember one year when the bobsled race was held out, getting the side of red now. People make the event happen.
At a cost.
Get creative and make it happen.
And a lot of more.
Well, honey, if there's no snow, we'll go back to year one and we will hold it in the arena hard and long.
On skateboards.
Skateboard, yeah.
Just came out and dropped a flop for us and...
Yeah. Okay. I'm gonna call the question unless there's any other comments. So this is on the motion with the amendment to tie it to the budget of ninety-five-hundred dollars. All in favor? Okay. Oh, man, all right, that's you, okay. And opposed?
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Okay, so that, it dies because it's tied. So the motion is defeated.
No, I'm gonna ask, sorry.
Yeah.
I'm gonna ask for some advice, being a first-time counselor from Tracy, being an experienced acting C A O. Is it possible for me now to move something quite similar to the original motion, even though the amended motion has been defeated?
Your worship, the council, the original motion should be back on the table?
Yeah.
Okay.
It should be, pardon me, back on the table.
Oh, yes, because we have to decide something on this, or you can make a different motion if you wish, right? You can do...
I'll, I'll move the original motion amended by an insistence that a letter go out saying that we will assess the fiscal performance of this year's Winter Carnival critically, referencing our letter of 2013.
Right, okay. And seconded?
Seconded.
Okay, any more discussion on that? Beat this one up pretty good. Am I called a question? All in favor? No? Okay. No, okay, so opposed? Opposed, okay, so that, okay, so we need another motion. So this is, this is what we're saying, that the original motion was that we're recommending the letter that was requested, you know, things that the committee requested, recommending that, but we were gonna send them a letter saying we're gonna look at them critically for next year. So that just died. So now we need somebody to make another motion about something.
Could we make essentially the same motion, so yes, we support it, with the caveat that they worked together and come up with a, at least some kind of a basic financial plan with a range of numbers?
Sounds like we don't have any opportunity to, to accept it, though, because after tonight, the next meeting is mid-January.
Right, yeah.
Lloyd?
We could propose, I could propose a motion that we support, support the carrying out We could propose, I could propose a motion that we support the carrying out of the winter carnival as per the budget, and allow a contingency of five thousand dollars. Gives them a little play.
Okay, we have a secondary there. Okay, Andy? All right, any further discussion on that? So, we support the letter with the existing...
As per budget.
Yeah, with the existing budget of ninety-five hundred dollars, with a contingency of five thousand.
Yes.
Okay. Which it doesn't mean...
That they can spend that five thousand.
That they could spend up to the five thousand. Bonus points if you don't spend it.
Knowing never watch it.
Knowing never watch it.
But again, includes the letter that...
And includes the letter, Aaron's letter, okay.
How will this, if I cost you guys more than five thousand dollars this year, I will never even ask. I go to the board and we see the game.
Oh, no!
Don't put that on record.
We don't, we don't...
Don't put that on record.
Yeah.
We might not get snow.
Yeah. Okay, so, let's see, that's been moved and seconded. Do we have, can we read the motion back from P S?
Yeah, sure. Motion by Counselor McCollum, seconded by Counselor Morel, that the request from the Roslin Winter Carnival be supported by council as per our budget of ninety-five hundred dollars, with a contingency of five thousand dollars, and a letter to be drafted concerning cost overrun as per the 2013 letter.
Oh, that ever good. Good, that's good. Okay, I'm gonna call a question, gonna vote on that. All in favor? Okay, opposed, nobody. All right, great, thank you. That was good discussion. Okay, so, now, we're going to our correspondence calendar. I need somebody to make a motion to receive these things, and then we'll go around the room to see who wants to talk about any of them. Have a motion to receive items twenty-two A through H, and act it on as recommended.
So, what?
Okay, Aaron, secondary? Andrew? Okay, Aaron, which would you like to talk about?
Actually, I have, I've moved them just to get the motion on the table. There is nothing here. I want to talk about all the recommendations seem to be in order.
Okay. Andrew, you wanna talk about any of them?
I had a short question on the A K B L G and the sand delivery.
Okay, so, tell me about C and... C, sand is...
I, your worship.
I, thank you. C and I, okay. John, do you have any you wanna talk about, other than C and I?
No.
Okay, Lloyd? Andy?
No, not this time.
Okay, I wanted to mention, did I mention D? I forget why. Oh, yeah, C and D. Okay, so...
You have the same question on sand, so, if you wanna do it, I can do it.
Yeah, okay, no, yeah, I got the answer. Okay, so, C, that is the A K B L G.
Yeah, I was curious what our plan is, or if we have a process for coming up with what our resolutions are, and suggesting that the strat plan seems to be the natural place to do that, if we're doing it in time.
Yes, the A K B L G, which I highly recommend everybody attend, you get the resolutions, and, oh, I've forgotten the date, they're in by, the first ones are in by February, something or other, right? These are things that, if they're of a big regional nature, of something that we want, or even bigger provincial nature, we would get them. I don't know that there's gonna be anything that we wanna do this year, our first year. If there is, we can do it. It would be, and we don't have to wait for a strategic plan to do it, if there's just something that this council thinks is an issue that we wanna take to the region, just all of the, you know, local...
So, most of the process, rather, if someone has something, we'll bring it up.
Yeah.
My thought was, there's strat planning, something might come up, oh, this would be great, and then you might realize, oh, it's not really within our realm, so let's take it to A K B L G.
Yeah, that's exactly what can happen, but you can happen that when you, anytime you're reading any of these things, something may occur to you that you'd like to talk about. Like, we took some education motions up.
So, I was thinking mostly about that.
Yeah, we did those, we did, I can't remember some of the last ones we had, I don't remember if we did a pesticide one, but, anyway, that's that.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah, so, hopefully, as many of us as can go will go to the C U S, because that's really good, and then the ones, what happens to them is they get discussed in, at the C U S meeting, and then they, if they pass there, they go on to the U B C M, which is also great, though. Okay, so, I had D, which was the Sustainability Commission meetings, and I'm just wondering, Aaron, if you wanna comment anything about the upcoming meeting in January, that you wanna make sure council knows about, gets on their count, their...
Sure. You, just, before I do that, very quickly, the only recommendation within those meetings that would result in us adopting is a recommendation to appoint a new member, and that's Kate Whiteside, but that's, I think we should just take that for granted as a good idea. The meeting in January that's been proposed by the Sustainability Commission is a meeting that tries to figure out, to which they've invited council, or will invite council, and will invite probably about another dozen people in the community, former members of the Sustainability Commission, people with an interest in the area, stakeholders. Has the feel of a strategic session that tries to figure out what's the right relationship between the Sustainability Commission and council. It will not explore in any depth what issues the Sustainability Commission should be working on. It will ask the question, how do they get their marching orders from us, with regards to what those issues are? So, is the present structure right? Should it be a commission embedded within the city? Should they be a separate organization? Should we have more regular meetings with them, trying to establish priorities, that kind of thing? That is the nature of the meeting they've got planned in January, and from that, they hope to take away a renewed mandate for action, and go, start figuring out what they want to work out, and hopefully jointly with us.
Okay, great, thanks.
That meet, quick question, if I may. That meeting is with all council?
All council, all councils invited, yes.
Yeah, and all members of the Sustainability Commission and the task forces, and some new recruits, people who've come forward and expressed interest in joining the commission, or the task forces, so, people. But it's not completely wide open to the public, it's people who've expressed an interest in getting involved specifically, you know, with what's going on there.
Just a question, sustainability, they, they give, their mandate is to develop what they think would be good for the community. Are we gonna delegate to them and then interfere with what they come forth?
Yeah, actually, their mandate is to take their orders from us as to what we want them to do. So, as written in the bylaw to establish the Sustainability Commission, we are supposed to tell them what to do. In practice, it hasn't really worked that way, since the establishment of the Sustainability Commission, they were told to work on water, economic development, and what was the other one?
Affordable housing, is that what?
Portable housing, sorry. But since then, there has been no explicit direction from council with respect to the issues they should be working on. They have come to council and said, we think we should work on this. So, one of the questions that'll be asked in the January meeting is, does that model work? Should they be coming to us and telling us what they wanna work on, or should we be telling them what we want them to work on?
Well, council adopted the Strategic Sustainability Plan, which was the big sort of blueprint. Out of that came the, came the task forces, the task, the commission and the task forces, then, you know, they, so, they have, they're working within that sphere, right? But, yeah, it should be us directing them, but the last council has let them come to us with recommendations, which hasn't been bad, 'cause they have some great ideas.
I was just gonna say, I don't think that's a bad format, and maybe we should look at the model. I'll have to get up to speed on the model, because I think if they got the latitude to just explore whatever, and then knowing for a while that ultimately, the council has the final say, but they might come forth with more, they won't feel so restricted. I don't know that they do feel restricted by council.
They feel ignored, actually.
Feel ignored.
Ignored. Unloved, they feel unloved.
I don't think they'll ignore them.
It could be a real collaborative thing, where council may have ideas about something, and the commission may have ideas about something, which can...
But they may come, and then they may say, well, have you thought of this, or can we amend that, or go this way?
Yeah, for sure.
Be a great opportunity to...
Yeah, so, the twenty-first, January twenty-first, is a great opportunity for us to reinvigorate that. Okay, I is the sand thing.
They saw the answer now.
Okay, he saw the answer, okay, and we saw the answer. So, everybody see the answer that came in the email? It's the, okay, so, we're all set with that one.
I think we got lots of sand.
We got lots of sand, we pre-bought our sand.
We got disco sand.
We did, do our beach.
Okay, so, now, we have our procedure bylaw. Did everyone see the answer to the...
We haven't voted on, except, we haven't voted on...
Oh, sorry, 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 yeah, so, call the question on motion to receive the information item. All in favor? Opposed? Good. Okay, so, here we are with the procedure bylaw. Yes, Tracy?
Your worship, I just wanted to say to council, I do have hard copies of the procedure bylaw as amended as per council, for Mayor Moore's recommendations today in her email.
I would love to have a hard copy. Did everybody see it? Did everybody get a chance to read the revised one? Okay, everybody did? Okay.
No, just a copy of the changes. What about... No, she's got the whole thing.
Oh, that's a little... You really love it? There you go.
And I do apologize, I didn't get my time on that, I think, no...
Well, we gotta talk...
No worries, no worries. The only thing I don't want you to say, if you can possibly not, your worship stuff. I'd like, I heard the mayor, the mayor of Fruitvale made an announcement...
The press watched one.
...at her inaugural speech not to call her your worship, and I think that would be great, but that's gonna be a habit for you, that's really hard to break, I think. Okay, so, the staff recommendation is that the council procedure bylaw number twenty-five eighty of 2014 be read a first, second, and third time. Do we have a motion to that effect, or a different motion?
I, I so move.
Okay, do we have a secondary to that?
A secondary.
Lloyd's secondary. Okay, so, start in on the discussion.
If I could get some clarity on what the implications are of reading this three times, or not reading this three times tonight, I'd be happy, guy.
Tracy?
Mayor Moore, through the council, if we take it to the third reading, our next step is adoption, and at that time, there is no more amending the bylaw. So, if there are amendments to be made, they should be made at first or second reading.
So, Andrew, what conditions wouldn't we want to read this three times? If we still have a bunch of outstanding business that we haven't agreed on in terms of amendments, then we...
And we shouldn't read it.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, the thing is, because, you know, I put in all those changes, right? And it was one of my concerns was that, well, perhaps everyone hadn't read it, because that went through this afternoon, you know, from what was in the package, right? And it's always good to, I mean, it's gonna guide us how we operate our meetings until we amend it again, right? So, it is, you know, you enter into these things, you know, with some seriousness. So, if we did three readings now, then we could adopt it in January, or if we did one reading now, then we, you know, we just, we make it, push it out farther, right? If we don't do three readings now, but it also gives us time to consider it, and if there's other things people are interested in. Tracy?
Mayor Moore, I would suggest that this evening, it would not hurt us to do first and second reading. If there are amendments, we would make those amendments now as well, and then we would bring it back for third, and then we'd have to bring it back to a non-reading for fourth. We cannot do third and fourth reading in the same meeting. And fourth reading is adoption.
Yeah.
Under this motion, so, are we voting on the one including the changes made to this time?
The one that I've just...
Okay, okay, got you. So, my only comment I made there is that, yes, I support the changes, and I like the idea that, looking through it, that if something dramatic comes up in a month or six months, we can make a change then. But I, out of principle, I don't like the idea of doing first, second, third reading all in the same meeting, if that is not the intention of having multiple readings. So, I like to set that tone early, even though it makes sense as is, I don't like the idea of doing all three readings in one meeting.
That's a good point. Would you wish to...
I just wanna speak to, at the manner of addressing council's speech.
Yes.
It was commented...
Don't tell me I have to call everybody counselor-some, so...
Well, it was commented to me after the last meeting, that it was much too informal, and the queen's picture was crooked. For some people, that's important, including McGrath and La, who's a mayor, he said, keep it formal.
We'll definitely keep the queen's, the queen's photos. I think, I tried to straighten that earlier.
I was gonna ask, because Laura is also a regular, regular citizen who comes to a lot of council meetings, and the other two gentlemen, they're in room, just because...
I have plans to attend recently.
Okay, and your interest in seeing the kind of formality that would be around the council?
I'd like to stay later, but I'm running late. I was just curious, my worship, what would you like us to refer to you as?
Mayor Moore is about as formal as I'm ever gonna be, right? I'm fine with that. Yeah, that's good. But I think Andy did have a question, and just because you're here, you can be our guinea pigs here.
Yeah, Laura?
It's like, are you comfortable with, like, me calling John John, or would you feel that I'm not being formal enough, and I should refer to him as Counselor Green? Is that, is that...
What's your feeling, Laura?
I think things have been way too formal, way too urdy, just time-consuming, and that's just my opinion, but I've been to a lot of meetings, and they do get tiring, just as some agendas get kinda tiring, too. I think if you can streamline, but still be very clear, who's going to be speaking first, who's speaking next, I can feel a bit of interrupting going on right now, but that's just getting used to the procedure, the hand-up, and who's next. But I thought, the last few years especially, just felt very strict, very rigid, and I think to lighten it a little bit, allows people to speak in a little more positive manner, in a little more relaxed, you know, we wanna get things done, we want people to want to be here, and want to be involved, so...
Thank you. Aaron, Counselor Cosby?
So, on this one, my preference is to go with Laura's recommendation. I think that it sets a tone of informality and less ivory tower-type conversation if we don't refer to each other as Counselor surname, and I don't refer to you as her worship. But I also think that the really important thing is, and I think Laura sort of was getting to this as well, how we're actually conversing, in the substance of what we say, and not getting bogged down in procedure. That is probably more important than what we call each other. So, I don't have a very strong preference on it, because I believe that part is the most important. So, if there are other people that feel really strongly that they don't wanna call me Aaron, and would rather call me Counselor Cosby, I'm okay with that, too. I just, I'm in favor of good conversation, no matter what I'm called.
Well, the comment that was in there, was my little comment about, well, I'm probably gonna breach that aspect of the code, you know, anyway, I wasn't saying take it out.
It's not a big issue with me either, I just...
Okay, Floyd?
I agree with Aaron. And as long as it's respectful, I mean, as long as we're doing that among ourselves. But there is a motion on the floor for second and third reading.
Right.
And I would support that, because I think then it's imperative that you do your homework. If everybody's reading their package and doing their homework, then you'll come here prepared to make the amendments. And this way, then we can adopt it in January, give it a final reading. And then we're getting on with the business, and we've got a lot of important issues. So, I support the motion, and I just think, read your stuff, and if you wanna make amendments, this is time to make them.
Okay.
Just because, this particular afternoon, I didn't get an opportunity to go through this particular...
You'll have to wing it.
Yeah, yeah. So, I would prefer to have that opportunity, and because we've got a bit of a break, I don't know if there's a rush to get this through.
I think the only thing it would require is that we make another motion to start our next meeting at six o'clock, because that's not in our, in our existing procedure bylaws, so our January meeting, we'd have to... Well, we'd have to do that anyway, right? Because it wouldn't have been adopted, so, we might have to make two motions to do that. But particularly, and this is not to be critical of you for not having done the work, because this, the revise came in late, right? But that's one of the reasons why you don't do three readings all at once, so everyone is up to speed. This one, it's like, okay, there's things here, this one, we could probably go ahead and do it, and it's not gonna be a horrible thing. But I agree with Andrew's point, is that we need to set the precedent that we don't rush through these things, because sometimes we're gonna have a bylaw in front of us that we really do need to take a sober second look at. And, and yes, you do the work, and you come prepared, but when you're sitting here, you don't come prepared to make a decision, you come prepared to hear what everyone else has to say. And if you, you know, do three readings, and out you go, and then afterwards, you think, oh, yeah, what Aaron said was really good, I wish I'd made an amendment, or I wish I'd said this or such. You lost, sort of lost that opportunity to do it, because the next thing up is adoption, right? So, I would like, and I've had experiences where that's happened, and I would like to have this council be a little more deliberative, without slowing down the works of government so we don't get anything done, right? So, anyway, so, if there's no further discussion on the three readings, we can vote on that, and if we have more discussion on the bylaw itself, we can have another motion about what we are gonna do with it tonight. So, I'm gonna call the question on giving this three readings. All in favor?
What's...
If we give it three readings now, that means that in our January meeting, we're gonna adopt it, with nothing else.
With no amendments.
Yeah, so, okay, so, all opposed? Okay, so, the motion failed. Okay, now, would someone like to make a motion about what we are gonna do with it tonight?
I would like to make the motion that we, we accept Tracy's recommendation, which I liked, the idea of doing the first and second reading at this point, and bringing it back for a reading. it back for a reading. But that will expedite it, you know, and won't push it as far.
We don't talk about it yet, just make your motion.
Okay, it won't push it as far, so...
Okay, so you're making a motion for first and second reading?
So make a motion that we...
You have a second there? Okay, all right, you have a second there. Okay, so now you can have your discussion. So why do you want to do that?
Uh, I just, it, it, it does shorten the time period by, by allowing us to do two readings tonight, and then come back for the third and fourth, as you said, have to be separate.
Separate meaning, Mr. Worship. Mayor Moore? Yeah. Okay, um, okay, so let's have a little discussion about the bylaw itself, because we've got it, we're going to give it...
Well, now, now we've got time to do January, the...
Well, no, but we can talk about anything we want, if, if there's changes, I mean, this would be the time that we'd say, if we, if we've gone through this, are there things that we want? You know, and if everyone's had a copy of the amended one, we can see if there's anything else we want to change about, or to talk about it. Aaron?
The, so one that I think is important is the question of how many months we have to reconsider a decision of council, which currently is set at six months, but apparently that's not set in statutes of the, um...
The Roslin Rule.
It's the Roslin Rule. It's not the community charter. And I think it's worth asking whether six months is right, or three months is right, or a year, you know? It, I'd, I'd rather have it less than six months, having seen it work to bad effect in other cases. Three months would be nice for me. But the advantage of having only first and second reading tonight is that we can come back to our next meeting having thought about that question, so I'm just putting it on the table at this point.
You want to comment on that? I mean, it's, it's meant, it's put in there so you don't just get things coming back and re, retread, you know, repeat and retread. I don't think the six months is bad, but I wouldn't be opposed to three months either, so, um, so if we want to make an amendment to that effect, we can. Do you want to change, you want to...
Sure, I'll move, I'll move to amend the, the procedure bylaw to a three-month, I'm talking about paragraph thirteen to A, reconsiderations of decisions of council, to change the term six months to three months.
Six months, six, do we have a second there? Okay, Lloyd, a second. Any further discussion?
Can I discuss it since...
Yes, absolutely.
It just seems to me that if, if the purpose is to keep harassing Counselor or Mayor from bringing something back that's just been rejected, you want something more substantial than next week, but three months seems like plenty of time to reconsider and bring something back. It's not a harassment to bring something back three months later. Six months seems like, uh, far too strict a requirement to be right the first time around.
Okay, all right. Any more comments on that? I'll call a question.
Um, yeah, I have a comment.
Yes, just on that one, yeah.
Except where the motion to reconsider the matter has received unanimous consent of all members of council, so you can do it quicker if everybody's in agreement.
Yeah.
So, just for the safety, you know?
Yep.
I like the six months.
I like the six months. Okay. Okay, any other comments on six months versus three months? Call a question, all in favor of three months? Okay, and opposed? Carrie? Okay, and I, I had wanted to add in there that the mayor has the, the power to bring back to, for reconsideration also, but as Ms. Butler pointed out, that is just a provision of the community charter. Mostly, I wanted you guys all to know that.
Now we know.
Yeah, now you know, so that's good. My, my purpose was, was achieved, that's all right. Okay, so what other things are there? I'm just looking over my notes here, and I'm looking at the notes that Tracy wrote back. Okay, so I still have an issue with that two-one-B, which, two-one-B, which is the swearing-in ceremony, because I thought that turned into a, into sort of a schmuzzle. In the definition, it says that the inaugural meeting is the swearing-in, the meeting at which members elected, the most general election are sworn in. So if that's the whole point of it, couldn't that thing we did at the courthouse just be the inaugural meeting, Tracy, or do we have to call a special?
Mayor Moore, the reason that's in there is because the thing that we do at the courthouse is not normal practice.
Right.
That is something that was fought up a few terms ago, and if we didn't have the participation of the other municipalities, it would be coming back into the council chambers like the city of Trail does.
Yeah.
So it's just to allow that flexibility, so if we do have participation from the other municipalities, then that's a go, but if we don't, we can have it. We're backing here at the inaugural meeting instead of having two separate...
Okay, so then to get around, my, my concern was that, that we had that lovely orientation with wonderful information that the community might have been interested in, right? If we had called that our first meeting, and said, okay, this is our inaugural meeting, and then immediately gone into committee of the whole to have the orientation or something, that way the public would have still known that that was going on. Like, we missed that opportunity to share information with the public. So that's, that's the thing that I'm trying, that I'm trying to get at by saying, because once you're sworn in, then you're, you're able to be a counselor, right? You don't, there was nothing magic about the inaugural meeting, we'd already been sworn in, then we started looking at our calendar and our, you know, what's...
You actually don't take office until beginning of that inaugural meeting, although you've been sworn in.
Right, but we could have made that inaugural meeting, opened that, and then had our orientation at that point, right? There was nothing magic about the way we did it.
No, other than the start of the meeting was already set at seven.
Yeah.
And average hours of seven.
Okay, all right, I guess...
You can always have your orientation after the inaugural, if that's what council prefers.
Okay, okay, that's good. I guess I just, was just trying to get around to making sure those kinds of things were ...
Your point is well-understood for next term.
Yeah, okay, thanks. And then, I still have a question about on three-one-D, the two days notice, and you talk about the Interpretation Act, but then, what is, do weekends count? Is it just business days? Is it hours? What is, and when it talks about clear days, you know, the, the first and the last excluded, that's starting to look like four days.
That's correct.
Okay, so, and, and do weekends count?
Yeah.
Okay, they do, okay. That's good.
There's nothing of non-business days anymore, other than...
That's true, we have the pleasure to work twenty-four-seven. On the no quorum thing, three-point-four-A, subsection two and three, and your question there was what happens if the mayor is not at the meeting? Well, then the acting, acting mayor would act, just like in any other meeting, right? So I didn't, I didn't, does everybody know where I am? Three-point-four, uh, is the postponement thing when there's no quorum, wait, quorum, including the mayor. Yeah, but if the mayor isn't there, it could be the acting mayor. Members present, held or continued. Yeah, because the same hour or the following night, like, I thought we already talked about this, that we were going to get rid of that part, because it wouldn't necessarily be the same hour the following night or the date of the next scheduled meeting, do you remember? We'd had that discussion.
Well, that's, we, we amended by putting in, um, three-point-four-A to C, the next possible date established by the mayor.
Okay. Okay, I mean, I don't know, I just don't like the same hour the following night or the, you know, it's like it's so restrictive there.
Well, you have a choice of, of any one of those three days.
Okay, members present, held, or continued.
So those are options, all, all those were options, A, B, C.
Okay, all right, we'll just let that go, yeah.
That's the result, okay.
Yes, okay. Um, okay, let's see if there's anything else. Okay, oh, seven-point-three, adding correspondence. So this one, we were talking, like, B talks about late items, the date of the regular meeting before the adoption of the agenda, so the late items are really in B. A is, they're late because they're not within the ten-day thing, that, because your answer was like, well, the, like, it was both applying to late items. And I wasn't thinking A was so much late items, it's just, A is when any member of council wants to get something on the agenda, and I was just trying to loosen that up a little bit.
Within five days of the actual meeting, so you're talking about Wednesday.
Okay, so Wednesday.
It's late.
It's late, but why don't we take out the bit about having, like, what if somebody comes ten days ahead or fifteen days ahead, then they just get it on the agenda without anybody saying? So that's strictly when it's getting that close to the, the time. Okay, so do we need any, so, see, I'm, until you pointed out the late part of that, I was thinking that that was the procedure for a counselor to add anything at any time.
No, your worship, I mean, it, really, the procedure should be that if a counselor wishes something to be added to an agenda, that comes through as a notice of motion in the preceding, preceding meeting, but, um...
Well, it would for notice of motion, but if they just want something, like, like, put this in the agenda, and it's a story about how some, somebody else dealt with dogs, right?
As long as it's before that sort of crucial deadline of getting the agenda out.
Okay.
I don't see a problem, I, I think there needs to be some caution as to having counselors knocking at the perpetrator's door, you know, when the agenda's supposed to be out the next day at two o'clock, saying, I want to add this, when there's been no discussion.
Right.
There needs to be some control, or what's put on the agenda.
Yeah, Andy first?
Just, just because I surprisingly have an item that I wanted to talk about tonight briefly, just, this is a new business item, and I wasn't sure how that, how, as far as council deals with something that comes up just last, very last minute, but needs to be dealt with right...
Well, you could do that in your members' reports, right? And if it's something small, you could, you could talk about something in your members' report, and you might just say, and I'd like to make a motion, such and such. And if it's small, great, if it's something that requires a staff report or staff time, or if it's something, I mean, in some cases, staff may just be able to answer the question, and we dealt with it right there. But if it's bigger, then it would need to be on an agenda. So, yeah.
And Mayor Moore, the other way is, of course, at the adoption of the agenda, if you want to add something.
Okay, that, that's what I was going to say. So, so I've missed that opportunity tonight?
Yeah, you've got members' reports yet to come.
I could, thank you.
Try it, just try it.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, so I'm just wondering if under seven-three, if there, if, if there should be something else, because, you know what, the whole time this procedure bylaw was in, I always thought that for me to add anything to the agenda, I had to get, like, permission and another counselor and all of that, so I totally misunderstood it for six years. Not that it ever stopped me, but, but Lloyd...
Under seven-three-eight, right after agenda, you could say no later than five days, five working days, rather than the date on which the regular meeting is due. After the word agenda, no later than.
Okay, on the, no later than, after the agenda, no later than, yeah, I like that, yeah.
That clarifies.
But if you're before that, you can, you can bring it in. Okay, is everybody good with that? Do we need to even...
I don't think we do, worship.
Yeah, I don't think we do either.
Yeah.
Good, okay. Okay, anything else that anybody has in? Okay, so now, Tracy made a good point. I had under seven, seven-six-B adjournment, I had replaced unanimous with majority, and Tracy's point was the counselor might want to be included in the discussion, but is just too tired after ten o'clock to make a clear decision that night. And so that would give somebody who's really too tired to just scuttle it and say, no, we got to deal with this later. So, given that, you guys want to keep unanimous, or go majority and let that poor sucker suffer? I'm okay if you want to keep unanimous.
I like unanimous.
I do, too.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, let's get that.
I think that anybody who can't be here because of that reason...
Thing like that, real commitment.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, then the other one was electronic meetings in ten-one-F, and I was thinking that we didn't need to adjourn a meeting if the connection's lost for a remote participant, and Tracy's comment was this section included as, as respect, courtesy of the council calling in. So like, if, you know, poor Martin's in Vietnam and he gets disconnected, like, we'd continue the meeting if we had quorum, and we would cancel if we didn't. Aaron?
Is, is the intent here, I, I think the intent here is to adjourn the meeting while we attempt to re-establish connection, and if that's the case, it makes good sense to me.
We wouldn't need to adjourn the meeting particularly while, you mean, and then start it up again, you mean, that...
Put five minutes on that, like...
Like five, five or ten minutes?
Yeah, um, I, it just says, well, yeah, I don't know, it says adjourn the meeting, which doesn't say while technical difficulties are involved, right? So to me, I was thinking, no, I mean, yes, Tracy.
Also, so that if, if that person who's phoning electronically is very involved in that discussion, that the other counselors have a chance to say, you know, we really shouldn't continue this discussion without that member present, perhaps we should refer it to the next meeting.
We could do that anyway.
Um, you could, but that, that was, but, that is part of the intent behind this.
Yeah.
So there is some discussion of whether to continue on that, on that topic or not.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, what does anybody think about that? Andy?
I would think that, um, if, if somebody was calling in, and they were given the choice of whether they want to be involved in that particular discussion, and, and for some reason it dropped, then you could say, well, you know, is it important, important enough to you that you need to come back to it, or, or are you okay with the decision of council play?
So we'd have to ask that at the beginning of the meeting, because we don't know if we're going to lose it.
Well, that's true, that's, to be honest, you almost, I mean, noting, noting the agenda, knowing the items on the agenda.
Yeah.
If there's something that is, that is close to one's heart, then I'd want to know that I, I'm not going to get cut off. That's convenient, isn't it, Clay?
Okay, why don't we, why don't we leave it the way it is? Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Aaron?
I, I think it probably shouldn't be in here, if, if we're talking about actually adjourning the meeting and stopping the meeting at that point, I, I don't think it should be in here. One of the risks of not being here physically is that you may not be able to participate in all the discussions, and, you know, we're doing everything we can to get you here, and it fails, that's, shouldn't be an impediment to the rest of us making progress.
Yeah.
And, and I, I have faith that this council will respectfully deal with those that have a keen interest in a particular topic by...
Yeah, maybe taking that one item, taking that one item and referring it or something, right? You know, yeah, okay, so, and, I mean, obviously, if we lose quorum, then the meeting's adjourned, that person, that's different, but I'm, I'm happy to take that out.
Yep, so I, I move that we amend by taking out that.
Okay, all right. Anyone want to second that, or do we care?
I'll second it.
Second it, okay, we'll just vote on this one, just because it was a little bit of the discussion. So all in favor of deleting F? Okay, opposed, nobody, good. Okay, we're going to leave the professional decorum in, but just don't hold me to it.
Yeah.
No one's gone to jail for that.
Yeah, good.
Yeah.
Let's see, we've already talked about reconsideration, I've already told you what I wanted the mayor thing in, and I think that's it on that. So anybody else have anything? So, oh, all the questions on first and second reading, all in favor? Anybody opposed? No. Excellent. Excellent, now, okay. So, I think we are at members' reports. Lloyd, have you got something for members' reports?
No, not really.
Okay, John?
Uh, not really.
Not really? Okay.
Meeting's coming up on Friday with the museum.
Okay, good.
Following Friday with the Heritage.
Okay, good.
Just quick note that I got together with Ann, immunity, and Terry, both Sustainability Commission, about the twenty-first event, and Ann and I are currently working on drafting up the invite, and doing something clever and interesting that hopefully will get people to sign this.
Great.
And that, I guess Terry's actually got thirty people already on his invite list that have already come to us and expressed interest in wanting to take part.
Oh, that's fantastic, new recruits.
Yeah.
Oh, that's great.
Excited about us.
Andy?
Yes, just, just briefly, and, and it won't be specific to the items, although I do have a meeting coming up, so I'll be able to be in a better position to report later. But if it's convenient to add a couple of items I did want to discuss, as you said, was possible today, one was specific to Blackjack Ski Club, it's hosting the NORAM event this weekend, and Darren mentioned to me, again, in the, you know, for our office talks, and so, in the, in the check-out line, he'd mentioned to me that, that there, the city does have a generator, electrical generator, and the club is not in a position to host it at its trailhead, we actually have to move up to Biathlon Trails. So they have a substantial generator, that is two years old, that they, was purchased under the emergency preparedness, um, situation, I guess that it's, it's sitting there, collecting dust, basically, until it needs to be used for an emergency. Darren, Darren said it, it's available to the club if the club needs it, and because we have no electrical on site, we are going to need a generation. And, and so I wanted to ask tonight if there'd be interest in supporting Darren and providing, the city providing that as a service to the club to host this very important race, and who knows what's going to happen weather-wise for the next thirty-six, seventy-two hours, but we're sure hoping we can pull this event off. It's been a tremendous amount of work thus far, and it will be even more so before the week's out. And it's for the weekend coming up.
Okay, so you're going to make a motion that...
I'd like to make a motion that the, that the city lend the generator to Blackjack Ski Club for this coming weekend.
If, if necessary.
If necessary, yeah.
Second? John will second it. I have a question for Tracy. Tracy, is there any cost to the city for using that generator?
Mayor, Mayor Moore?
Good job.
See, the cost?
Good catch.
The only cost I can see to the city is if we have to actually deliver it. I'm not sure what the...
Could the club get it?
Is it on a trailer?
It, it is actually, it is actually a trailer in itself, it's, it's, it is a trailer, it's got reels, it's licensed, insured. it's got reels, it's licensed, insured. Actually, the city probably has to. My guess is a piece of city equipment, I doubt anybody else can legitimately allow for insurance purposes to move it.
Mayor Moore, that would be the cost, is having a, a staff person take it up there and set it up.
Okay.
And then pick it up again, yeah.
And I'm assuming we could set it up on the Fridays, we could do it not in overtime?
Yeah, most certainly.
Where are we, are you going, Blackjack or?
So it's going to the Biathlon Trail, so parking lot that's just up past Hannah Creek, just past Neptune Creek.
No, it's not going to the Castlegar?
No.
Basically, the last ring down?
No, we are actually, at that, we're actually higher at Biathlon than, than on Lake is, so we're in a position there to host the event if the weather gods allow.
Okay, so I think we can vote on that, unless there's any other thing, lending to the city, I mean, the city lending the generator to Blackjack? All in favor? Okay, opposed, nobody, good.
The other item was just briefly, there was discussion around the miners' hall and the use of the farmer's market coming up. Someone else stopped me and said there was, my concern, I know, was on the wear and tear on the floor, and Tracy and I had a quick discussion the other day, actually, it was Marilyn, wasn't it? So another, another impromptu discussion. There's, there's a substantial rubber covering that the, the high school has, that they put down on their, on their wood floor for, I guess, big events where there's going to be a lot of traffic. It might be something that we can, we can investigate, because I know for a fact, because I've been involved with our CAC, and I know Agbert well, to know that he coordinated the repair and refurbishing of that floor a couple of times. It's a major expense and a tremendous amount of wear and tear to have a large public gathering where people are coming and going, so I would consider looking at possibly borrowing that. Maybe it's, maybe there's a, an arrangement between the school board and the city where they might be able to say, well, we need it in those particular dates, Saturday. Sure save the floor.
Yeah, Tracy, how would we handle that? Would, would it be the city asking the school district? So it'd need to be a conversation with Meech.
Mayor, I would suggest I will contact the superintendent of the school and talk to him about it, and perhaps investigate what the cost would be for the purchase of something.
And if there's a purchase, it could go towards our budget discussion, be an add in there, had it in there. Aaron?
I will make that call.
Thank you.
Is it, are we really talking about something that's unusual in terms of wear and tear? I mean, you, you have hundreds of people in there dancing and spilling their booze and dropping their.
Yeah, I don't think the market is going to be so hard, but I think this idea could work for potentially other events that happen in there, so it's worth investigating.
I know the problem in the winter months is coming and going, so they're taking, bringing in a tremendous amount of snow, dirt, and salt. For that particular event, there'll be literally hundreds of boots on the floor those five days, and, you know, when people come in for a dance, often they change their footwear, and they leave it at the front door, but they're going to be actually coming into the hall.
Right, got it.
And, yeah, there's carpets at the front, but it only catches so much.
Yep.
Okay, great, anything else?
No, that's it.
Aaron, members' reports?
I think John wants to speak to this.
Oh, do you?
How big is it? And?
I don't know, I don't, I just know that Marilyn mentioned it, to me, Marilyn Nelson mentioned it, and that, and this large rubber mat is.
Yeah, where do you store it?
It's a good question, it may roll right up, it might be quite compact, doesn't need to be something really thick, anyhow.
We'd incur another cost by going and getting it and putting it down and that kind of thing. My experience with the school district, the school plan officials throughout the province, the only problem they ever had in their gym floors, not the dances and people coming and going, square dancing. Square dancing just tore the hell out of the floor and you had to refinish it. But that really was the only problem we ever had. We had dances, like Aaron said, and people coming and going for craft fairs at the Roslin Secondary School.
They used to be at ours, too.
Auditorium, they're coming from outside in, they don't destroy the floor.
Now, for some reason, the high school has got this unit, this, this covering and uses it, so I'm never.
We're finding out about it.
Yeah, that'd be great, okay, thank. Okay, Aaron?
Quick members' report, I attended the Visions for Small Schools Board meeting last week. Not, a lot to report on, they held the snowball dance at the miners' hall successfully, but some questions about whether they are willing to do that again, it may not happen next year. They may not be willing to take on the liability for events that too often these days see a lot of intoxication. But the, probably the more interesting question that they wrestled with was their potential expansion next year, so they have this year just under fifty students, but they had to turn a lot of students away. They're in a small space, relatively small space, and they simply don't have the room to run as many students as want to be there, and they're anticipating an even greater demand next year, and I know from my informal surveys that that's the case. There will be a bunch of students coming back to Roslin from Crow next year that are currently down there for grade ten, and a great interest in the grade eights and nines from RSS going over there. So they're trying to explore ways, or trying to, trying to find sites within Roslin that are suitable for a larger operation, and not coming up with anything particularly obvious. So, just to put it on our, put it on the table, that, that's a challenge they'll be facing in the coming year, trying to figure out where they can expand their operations, how, and if there's any way the city might offer support, nothing occurs to me at this point, but we should keep our eyes open.
Good, great, thank you. I have a couple of things. I just, I, all of us in this room went to the newly elected seminar in Christina Lake, and I thought it was a great session, I think we all got quite a bit out of it. There were counselors from Castlegar, Nelson, Roslin, Grand Forks, who are all there, and Tracy Lawrence did a really good job facilitating, and I think, you know, the team building and, you know, how we work together to be a functional council was really good information. I was really happy, glad we went. Also, wanted to say the Trail Warfield and Roslin mayors are already working collaboratively together. We got the RDKB to provide information to Trail so they could get on, on with doing their engineering for the pipe bridge, which was good. I've had a couple of conversations with Mike Martin, and we have a really good working relationship there, we're going to start talking about recreation soon, so this group needs to talk about recreation soon, figure out what approach we want to have down there with that. Attended the event by Tursum Roslin this morning with Lloyd, and it was on delivering remarkable customer service and having remarkable customer service experience in Roslin, and the need to differentiate Roslin from all the other ski resorts and communities that are out there, and basically the conclusion is, it's like, really top customer service is what makes the difference. And they had a gal from Destination BC who gave, you know, gave her, her talk, and it was, it was really good, I thought it, I thought it was good, people seemed to be very excited about it, there was a good turnout, they said they expected about thirty people, they're not getting a hundred. They're doing a session tonight, and they did a session this morning, so that was great. Also, welcome to a couple of new businesses that are in town, I don't know if anyone's gone to Akadake Sushi, but it's really good, and I still can't figure out what the business is across the street, but I'm, I want to go there and find out. I'm going to be attending the West Cutney Economic Development Dialogue tomorrow, actually, and this is a collaborative group, mostly mayors, but also Chamber of Commerce and other economic development folks that meet quarterly, and this group, like, the LCCDT is sort of Fruitvale to Roslin, and this is sort of Trail to Nelson, so it'll be good because it'll include the mayors of Nelson and Castlegar, which, you know, that aren't in the LCCDT, so that's good. And then we've got the program of Art in the City, Art in the City Hall, which I spoke to Renate Fleming today about trying to contact local artists and get art, colorful art on our walls instead of all our formal stuff in here to make it more approachable and personable. And I sent out the first draft of our newsletter, just about ready to roll on that, we're going to get a few more comments, and the city is doing their winter newsletter, so I want to make sure there isn't overlap there. But I think it's really important, we all campaigned that we would be more communicative and engage our community, so I think it's really important that we get that first newsletter out there. This one will have a paper component, but in the future, I want to get away from that and just have a few in locations that really build up our email list, so we have to work on that. And I think that is all I have. Oh, we need to get our new committees up and running, because we now have seen in our calendar, info packet, the calendar for the discussions of the financial plan, and some of those new committees are involved with, you know, looking at segments of the financial plan and getting, getting some input onto those specific areas. So if you're on any of those committees, we need to talk about that. And, Aaron, what?
Just a comment on, on your report, in the, I like the idea of putting art around here, but I hope you're not going to take the Queen Elizabeth.
I'm not taking the Queen away, absolutely not, she can stay and we'll keep her straight.
Yeah, yeah, a highly traditional guy.
What about a painting of the Queen, right? No, 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 we're going to do that, that was good. Let's see. So, did we want to address changing any of those COW meetings now, or are you fine for us to talk about that?
Mayor Moore suggested wait till after Lois has done her presentation and then we can.
Okay.
And if you're about to conclude your members' report, we do still need a motion to convene in the six o'clock.
Yes, we will do that, and I, I have one other thing, too, I want to make a motion that Counselor Wicker has added to the Liquid Weights Management Stage Two Task Force, because he has some great ideas and I think it'd be wonderful to have him there, so, I don't, I can just appoint him, I don't need a motion, right? I do need a motion.
Appointed by Councilor, it's not a.
Oh, that's right, okay.
You appointed K P.
So somebody seconded, it's not RDKB, yeah, okay. Any discussion on that? We're all good with that?
Have to do it.
Yeah.
Who, who made the motion?
I did.
Oh, you can, you can.
I guess I can't. Andy did.
I'll make the motion?
Yeah.
I'll second.
Aaron seconded, good. To have Andrew added to the sewage task force, yeah. Okay, there's that, and then we do need a motion to have our next meeting.
We gotta vote on that.
Oh, yeah, sorry, sorry, vote on that, all in favor? Yeah, done. We need a motion to have our next meeting at six o'clock?
Actually, I'm gonna, there was something in my members' report that I forgot.
Oh, okay.
And it was about as closely related to my members' report as Andy's motion was related to his. It is that we, it is that we reschedule our committee of the whole meetings on finance for the coming three months to Wednesdays instead of Mondays.
That's what I was just talking to Tracy about, and she has suggested that we do that after we have our orientation with Lois, so.
So would that mean the coming meeting on the?
Which is on the fifteenth.
Fifteenth would go ahead as, as planned on the fifteenth?
Yes. I think Council could change that to the Wednesday if they prefer.
Just, can I ask informally, is that inconvenient for voters?
She did not indicate that today, I don't think it would be.
Wouldn't be a problem for her.
But the only concern I have is that Counselor McCollum is leaving for holidays on the sixteenth.
Yes. I think we need to keep the fifteenth on the fifteenth, because Counselor McCollum would be gone on the sixteenth, right? So, sorry, we didn't miss one more, agree? Then we'll change it.
This is the one right before our big performance, but we'll be, we'll be okay.
Get those guys to spend a little bit.
Actually, that is one, the fifteenth is the performance day.
Mayor Moore, we could, we could up the time, I mean, we do have it starting at five, we could have it starting at an earlier time and adjourning if that would help.
Sure.
We're just confirming dates here.
So what we've got on, when, no, so the, the performance is the twenty-first.
Okay.
So that's the last rehearsal before that.
Yeah, yeah.
So, do you, would, would it be helpful to do the, to do the session on the fifteenth? Could everybody come earlier on the fifteenth? There is something I've committed to starting at two-thirty, so I wouldn't want to start, we start at four, we were going to start at five. How many, how long are we going to have on the fifteenth? Is it three hours?
It doesn't, that doesn't matter, doesn't make any difference.
Doesn't make any difference.
Okay, so we'll live.
Okay.
I'll get you pizza.
Pizza, there we go. Okay, yes, Andrew?
One thing I meant to say in my report about the Matt Mark coming up this weekend, Meech did say we're totally cool to have a table, and she contributed us to the point of putting us on a poster saying Council will be there.
Okay.
So I guess part of the question is, who wants to come to the market and get a table? We're going to have a table with a couple of seats on our side and a couple of seats on the other side for people to chat in. I was also going to check see if Roslin had any kind of banners or brochure or something we could just put on the table. Do we have any kind of like trade show type setup or anything, like, I mean, a banner maybe or a poster even?
Mayor, the only thing we have is a city pin.
Well, that's good, that's good, we can bring pin.
We can bring pins.
You don't have a banner?
No, we don't have a banner, we, we, the things that stick on the sides of car doors, right?
I mean, I, I do have a flag, city flag, you're welcome to that.
People will recognize this.
What were the hours, hours, is it, did she stick with the two to midnight thing